Good afternoon. We'll go ahead and get started with our moment of silence and pledge led by Ms. Bab.
I'll stand for a moment of silence. Let's face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any elected officials in the crowd this evening, but thank you all for being here. We are in this setting so that hopefully this is more of a work session, a little more casual. We'll see how that goes and decide if we'll have our next quarterly work session in this room. So, thank you for bearing with us as we kind of have a little bit of a different format in our location. Board members, just a reminder that our November meetings are scheduled on November 6th for the work session and November 13th for the regular session, and both meetings will begin at 5:00 PM in the main assembly room. And do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman and a second by Mr. McMillan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And Superintendent Thomas, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. A few brief updates since we last met. First of all, let me start out by saying my, expressing my gratitude for our students, families, and staff. I know I've stated this before, but we are very fortunate to have a truly great school system in Knox County, and I'm very blessed to serve as superintendent. We strive every day to provide the very best education for our students. In order for this to occur, all students must have, and they all deserve, a safe and positive school environment in which to learn. Fighting is unacceptable for any reason and will not be tolerated. I want our parents and our students to know that whenever we become aware of a threat of violence or fight on school property, our school administrators take immediate action to investigate and address the situation. This also includes alerting law enforcement agencies when appropriate. We are committed to providing a safe and positive learning environment for all of our students and staff, and I will fully support our principals in their efforts to maintain a climate that is conducive to teaching and learning. Anytime that parents, guardians, or family members become aware of a situation that makes them concerned about the safety or well-being of their child, please contact their child's principal to address the issue. On a scheduling note, I wanted to remind the board and our KCS community that because of local elections, next Tuesday, November 5th, is a student holiday. Even though schools will be closed on November 5th, I'm looking forward to an event at Farragut High School that day in which a group of students will teach local elected officials about computer coding. The Politicode event is an excellent opportunity for our students to show what they're learning about new technology, and I'm excited to learn a thing or two myself, so hopefully I can code a little bit after that's over with. Before we begin the work session this evening, I'd like to take a few minutes to share with you a little about the presentations you are about to hear. In 2018, the board indicated that it wanted us to pursue our own leadership training model for aspiring principals and aspiring leaders that would ensure that we have a pipeline of future school administrators. Dr. Rodney Russell has been working on developing an aspiring leaders program, and he is here to provide you with more information on this initiative. Also, as many of you know, vaping has become a serious concern nationwide, including in our schools. According to the recently released Youth Risk Behavior Survey conducted in partnership with Knox County Health Department, one out of six middle school students reported they have used an electronic vaping product. Danny Trent, our Executive Director of Secondary Education, and his team will be sharing some of the things that we're working on to address this. And finally, we will be providing you with an update on our cultural responsiveness training. While the University of Tennessee was a very good partner in the past, in the first phase of training, we believe that an in-house model will be best as we move into Phase Two. An in-house model will allow us to devote two full-time employees to provide cultural responsiveness work that will be continuous and would be tailored more toward individual school needs. Cultural responsiveness training must be ongoing, and dedicating two full-time employees allows for a more effective and sustainable model for the future. Janice Cook, our Director of School Culture, has developed a plan that we feel will better serve the district, and she, along with Tammy Campbell, will be presenting it this evening. Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. As we move into the presentations, since we do want this to be more of a casual format, board members, if you would, just, if you want to speak, just, just kind of, you don't have to raise your hand. Just, just kind of, kind of the same format that we've used at our fall workshop. We'll just go with that. And so, the first thing we're going to discuss is the aspiring leaders program, and I'd like to call our Leadership Development Specialist, Dr. Rodney Russell. And as he comes, I want to just say that a couple of years ago, Jennifer Owen and I were on the review panel, Review Committee for Leadership Academy, and so what Dr. Russell is presenting really came out of, began in that conversation, and the board asked the school system to come up with our own development plan for principals. And so, that's what, that is what we are hearing tonight. And we, if you'll remember, at our 2018 fall workshop, we, we had a presentation by Dr. Russell at that time, and, and we've heard from him a couple of times. But this will really, hopefully, give us a much more global view of what the plans entail. So, if you would, go right ahead, Dr. Russell. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent. It's a privilege to present to you an update on our leadership development work that we have been doing over the past couple of years. Technically challenged here. I apologize for the delay. But the aspiring principals program has its first cohort. The New Administrators Academy is also underway. And these programs, the aspiring principal program is designed for assistant principals who aspire to move into the principalship role. So, that is the, that's the purpose in that group that is underway, and that was the, the program that we had application for last year. And, and so they started with a summer institute, and you all, they were introduced to you guys, to the board in August, I believe, or September, early in this semester. The New Administrators Academy is for those administrators in our district that have, that are at the instructional leader B license level that need to move to professional license, and then they are new to administration. And this is a way of, that we do an induction, inducting them into Knox County schools. The way we do things around here, it is also led by our own people, and they, when they hear about human resources, it's Knox County Schools Human Resources that, that come and, and speak to them. And they are spending about one day a month just going through the ropes. And it is a, it's an opportunity for them to form a cohort for that. They're, they're experiencing things together. And then, we also have coaching available for them as well, and then they get the blessings of having some of Betty Sue Sparks's wisdom given, shared with them as well. The third program is the one that I want to talk about today. And it is the newest proposal. This is one that has not started at this time. We have not had any, we haven't taken application, anything for this program. And it is for instructional, for teachers, coaches, others who aspire to move into the leadership program. And so, it is different than, than our aspiring principal program, but that it is, it is designed for those class, those people in the classroom who are aspiring to move in to this program.
Do you want questions now, or is it?
If you want to ask, if there's something that comes off, feel free.
Yeah, just, I want, and you might have clarified and I missed it, but the ILB and the ILP, can you just kind of?
Oh, I'm sorry. Instructional Leader Beginning License. So, it is what they are initially issued after they complete a program, a leadership program. And then, the instruction, the ILP is the professional license. It is what they are given after they complete their professional development plan or go through a program that the state has set up for new administrators. All right, the, the aspiring leaders program will have three phrases, three phases. Phase one will be held in the spring. During Phase One, aspiring leaders will participate in seminars on things such as servant leadership, things of that nature, and then they will also participate in additional assessments. And this assessment will tell them, it'll help them understand their leadership style, personality traits, things that, that will impact them, and we will have that information as well as we begin to, as the superintendent and the other leadership of Knox County Schools looks to place these possibly in the future in administrative positions. Phase Two will take place during the summer. And this is the only time that we will have, I guess, a college course-type structure. And this is the piece that we will, we will do over four weeks in the summer, and it will focus on things like finance, law, instructional practices, the role of the leadership in those. It will certainly involve a lot of Knox County Schools personnel. It will also involve administrators who have retired. The whole program, everything we're doing right now greatly is dependent on people recently retired from the Knox County Schools. And then Phase Three is the year-long session that will continue all of next year. And basically, what has to happen here for them to move into Phase Three, they have to be accepted into an assistant principal position. So, after, after the courses are offered in the summer, there, it does not guarantee that you automatically will move into the assistant principal role. And the reason for that is we are, we are working from an understanding that one of the, one of the things that we had to do differently was not have, we couldn't create positions specifically for the aspiring leaders program like the, the previous program had. So, and also, we did not want a heavy cost in substitutes. So, with that, we were looking at, how do we do this? And the, the one way is to use the sitting assistant principal positions. Now, if they do not go in the first year, they will still be in the pool, and they will still have other benefits in the program if we, if we agree also to the, for example, the MOU with Carson Newman. They would still benefit from some of those, those type things. So, there's three phases in this program, and as I said, the year-long is really when they move into that, into the assistant principal position. And to get there, they, if, if they do not have a license, it will be a different for them. And let me just move on to, to get to that part. But the curriculum will be aligned to these five areas. And basically, it's the, these are areas that have been identified by the Wallace Foundation as what effective principals need to know. So, that'll be, that'll be the core of what we do. And it's, looks, again, very similar to what we're doing with, with principals, just at a level of how do you support that as an assistant principal? How are, how do you serve as an extension of the principal in the building as you carry out these, these tasks?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
It kind of, I guess, follows on hers of, sorry. If they're accepted into this program and they do the Phase One and Phase Two, is there also additional master's work and stuff like that that they're going to be needing to have to be able to move into an assistant principal principal position?
Can I, can I go just a little bit deeper into this and, and see if, if I answer that question? So, educators who hold an administrator's instructional leadership license but have not been appointed to the school administrator position will be eligible. Candidates who are in an instructional leadership program at, for example, Carson Newman, the University of Tennessee's online program, any, any of the state-approved programs. If they're in it, then they would be eligible to, to enter this, enter this program. And then also, we are looking to have the opportunity, the option of being able to recruit a licensed teacher who has three years' experience and who has demonstrated exceptional leadership ability. And this is, again, a piece that's important because we want to be able to recruit, for example, to, we've got an amazing 19% minority or population of administrators in our district. And if we, what if we have to do to maintain that in recruiting the most capable candidates, we want to be able to do, and some of those, they may not be sitting with the administrator license right now. So, it just gives us that, that kind of freedom. But everyone who enters to that, at that Stage Three, to answer your question, must have a license. Now, what we are, what we are going to do, or what we would do with our partnership with Carson Newman, this, they would request, or they would be the ones to ask, to approach the state to give our candidates the instructional leader aspiring license. It is a license that was used by the Leadership Academy. It is, it's not one that you hear a lot about because it's not, it's not used by large numbers. Most are graduating from an instructional leadership program and then being issued the beginning license. But if you, the state has this license option for those that are in practicum-based programs. So, although we would be, the, the actual licensure program would still be just Carson Newman's regular program, they're willing to accept those four classes we're doing in the summer and give credit for those classes as long as we allow one of their professors to, to participate, to be a part of that. And then, the additional, there would be eight additional classes that they would have to take, and they would have a couple of years to get through those. Is that?
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes.
I have two, actually. So, with this being the people that are eligible to go into this program, is there a ranking for who gets selected or is it for a number of spots? Like, is there an order of how many you will select from each category, or have we gotten to that point yet?
In terms of what I've given them so far, it would not, the rank, the selection would not be based on, you know, we wouldn't take so many without a license or.
She's going to be qualified here?
We'd be looking at just, yes, the, the best candidates we can recruit.
And then my second question is, what's the data behind selecting three years as a teacher versus maybe five years? Because we know that strong, schools have, with the strongest administrators are the ones that do the best, and I'm unsure of three years versus five years or even 10 years. Like, what is the num, what is the reason behind that?
And, and saying that three years are those that would be eligible to apply, that is, it's state law in terms of who can, who you can actually license.
Laws, come sit down.
Okay.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's just clarification. The, do you know, at this point, the committee that, that you're talking about that's doing the selecting, do you know how many individuals will be on there or approximately how many individuals?
It would be very, it would be similar to what we use for the aspiring principals, which means that it's going to be, for example, John Ryswick, your executive directors of, at the grade levels. So, Julie Thompson, Danny Trent.
You don't have to name.
Yeah.
Names, I just, I just wanted to know whether there would be three, five, eight, nine, whatever.
Typically, it's going to be about, about five people.
Okay.
And then that recommendation goes to the superintendent.
Okay. Now, can anybody, in order to get, to be considered, I guess, do they have to come from this committee's recommendation? Or can anybody that wants to apply and then the committee sort of looks at the pool and weeds them out, so to speak, or, well, weeds them out is a poor term, ranks them according to how many that we're, we're going to be able to handle this, this particular year?
So, the selection process, and I just moved to that slide in the presentation, is, it's going to be built around the, the initial application that they will complete. Application process will involve the recommendation of their principal, and that will be 50% of the initial selection process. And then there will be 25% that is based on the Gallup Principles Insight Tool, which is a predictor of a candidate's potential to lead. And then, there will be written responses to essay questions that will also be scored. And all of that will be collected, and we, it will be used in a, to rank, for lack of a better word, the candidates. But really, what we're also looking at is the needs of the district. And there's, there's several things that I think that go into, to play in terms of how many we would select, would be driven by the district need, and also the candidates, the, what the picture looks like.
Okay, but now, can anybody apply that has three years?
Every, anyone can apply.
So, they don't have to be recommended by some member of the committee? The committee just takes X number and, and looks at them and ranks, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
So, applicants who do not hold an administrator's license will need to be a licensed teacher, hold a bachelor's degree or higher, and have three years' experience, meet entrance requirements for the instructional leadership program to a partner university, and be eligible for instructional leader license aspiring. So, the aspiring license.
Can they do, what else can they do with that license? Like, can they, is it, can they go out of state? Just curious.
It is, it is just, if, if you're familiar with the job embedded license for teachers, it somewhat operates like a job embedded. So, the, the university recommends it's good for three years in the state of Tennessee. If, if they do not maintain satisfactory, you know, satisfactory progress, or if they drop out of the, of the coursework, then the, the university has a process that, that they can separate themselves from, from that person. But it does take a university to recommend that, that license. Okay? Everything that, that I've talked about here as far as what we would do, what we can do is not dependent on us having an MOU with Carson Newman. So, we can still do this program, everything that I've laid out for you, without us having the partnership where we do, where we allow those that, without a license, to be able to enter the program or allow our administrators to, to recruit someone that demonstrates great leadership potential but does not have that, that license. We can, the, the program, as we, as you have heard it, would still be able to continue without that university partner. University partnership obviously gives us some more flexibility. Okay? We've already talked about the ALP selection process. The interview process, again, will be the same as the aspiring principal program. We'll narrow the field, and, and then there will be interviews conducted with everyone, and we gave everyone feedback from that, from the aspiring principal program. I, I'm not sure what our numbers will be with this. I mean, it could be, we could have 100, 200 applicants easily. The training sequence will be, began with full-day sessions held once a month beginning spring semester of the year, and that, that will begin with Phase One. Phase Two, as I said, will be, take place throughout May and June of 2020. And in order for, to be in the program, candidates must be available to attend the summer coursework. Carson Newman University has agreed to partner with us in offering these courses if we choose to go that route. This will allow candidates who enter the ALP not in an instructional leadership license program or her, or do not hold a license already, to be placed in this program and, and move forward as well.
Can I ask a question about the spring training? Will this program pay for the substitute teachers, for these teachers to miss the classroom?
Yes. Yeah, that is, that is one place that there will be, be a cost for us as well.
It'll be absorbed by the program, not by the individual schools?
It would be absorbed by, yes, yes. We, the, the budget for the aspiring principal program had that, had those dollars included in it. And I, I won't spend more time on Phase Three, but again, that's the, that's going to be the, the year where they get the coaching, and it is going to be very much practicum-driven. And if, with Carson Newman, I know that they will also use the court, the, the work that is being done in Phase Three to meet the practicum requirements in, in their program. So, there will still be some anchor assignments and things that, that those, anyone that is going, that is pursuing licensing, that they would still have to do. But still, that is also a nice benefit for anyone who needed to take those, those courses. And these are just some of the people that have been working with me on this program. There's someone here that I want to introduce. I've introduced her to some of you already, but Dr. Kim Hawkins, Dan, and she is here in relation to Carson Newman University, and she can answer questions about that. But the main thing is I wanted to also be sure that you all saw is that there is actually a separation between those that would be pursuing license and, and what Carson Newman would be doing with them. I, Carson Newman's being a good neighbor, and I have worked up there for this, for a cup, for almost two years now. As I transitioned back to do this work, I can tell you that they, they have been a good neighbor and, in offering this because they're taking, they're, they're giving a lot and with nothing really guaranteed that, that they're, they're going to receive in return. We will offer to those that, if we go with that MOU as well, we will offer to any candidates that are in this program. They can use those four courses toward, toward an EDS, and they can go, they can enter their program as well. But that is all, would be separate from what we're doing in Knox County and what is, what is done at Carson Newman University. So, they are, they are, that, that would be an option for our people. It is not a requirement. And again, other, we're going to have people in this program who are from all, from many of the programs that are approved in the state. Any other questions?
Okay.
It sounds like this is avoiding then some of the duplication we were concerned about in, in people that already had the degrees, not having to go in and re-earn them.
My understanding of why that you ask us to do this, or when it was being discussed by the committee, and certainly Susan and Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the, the point of having a separate program for those that were assistant principals.
Correct.
Dr. Russell, I really like under, I guess it's under the slide of applicants who do not hold an administrator's license. I think some of our, part of the role of an administrator or a head principal is to be able to identify that talent, and at a school that I'm familiar with. be able to identify that talent, and at a school that I'm familiar with, I watched as that principal took that role very seriously and encouraged several of their teachers to pursue advanced degrees and to pursue that avenue, and one of them currently serves as an AP in Knox County, and the other one is a superintendent in an adjacent district, so I think, you know, I like the fact that we can utilize too, not just limit it to, but utilize the principals who know their staffs about best to see some of those that they feel like will make good administrators in the future, so I like that. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify for some of the new people who may not have been following when we were looking at the Leadership Academy, some of the differences and some of the things that were concerns at that time. The version that we had previously was at a cost of $25,000 per participant. That also required those participants to often go through another degree program even though they already had a degree and were already licensed. So they may have already been principals or assistant principals, they may have already had that licensure, but in order to go through the Leadership Academy, they had to go through that degree program again, and that was quite a lot of additional work, especially for a new administrator, so that was concerning. We also had a limit of how many people could be in the program. The maximum we ever had was twelve, and that was being reduced year by year because it was being open to other counties, and so I think the last year we had maybe six, and the others were from other counties. So what Dr. Russell is looking at, the admin, the aspiring principal program has twelve, right? And so the other program can have many, many more, so we are going to touch many more aspiring leaders that way. The, the other thing that's really important is that those who applied to the Leadership Academy in the past had no way to know why they weren't selected, and that was something that was very concerning to us as committee members, is that they felt that they, that they had been passed over without being told why. And so I know that Dr. Russell has made a concerted effort to be sure and have a post-interview with those candidates and let them know the reasons why they were not selected, maybe what they could do to be a stronger candidate, and so I think that was very important to our, our folks who had applied to the program. Several people had applied year after year after year, and they had no idea why they were being turned down, and so I think that's something that's very important to us moving forward.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Owen, for going through that, and, and I, I definitely agree, and I think that Dr. Russell has really incorporated, really, everything that we talked about. I mean, I'm not sure that there's anything that is not here. I think you've incorporated every single item that we discussed in those, in those meetings, and, you know, we asked that, that, that folks be given that honest feedback and, and we don't, so that if, if we don't see them being an administrator, that we just tell them upfront, we ask for the strength and weakness testing to be done to make sure we're, we are putting the right people in these, in these programs, and, and I think too, the, the opportunity for our teachers, I don't think that, I think a lot of them did not feel like they had an opportunity to think about advancing to, to an administrative level, so I think that hopefully this, they'll see that they do have an opportunity to do that. So thank you for all the time and effort that you've put into really taking into account everything that we discussed in our committee meetings as well as the board at large. I think that was two years ago? It's a year and a half or two years ago, so, so thank you very much for bringing this to us, and if we don't have any other questions, we will move on, and thank you so much, Dr. Russell, we appreciate it. Okay, I'd like to refer now to our Executive Director of Secondary Education, Danny Trent, who's going to give us an update on what this wonderful army of people are doing to address this issue that is a huge concern to everybody in our community right now. He does have an army with him, so, yes, I love it.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent. Thank you for letting us come and share some critical information with you tonight about vaping. You see the, where am I adding up? There we go. It's an issue that's interfering with the health and safety of children in Knox County Schools and also the learning. It's, it's probably exploded as fast as anything I've seen in my twenty-five-plus years. It's just, it's everywhere, you can't pick up the paper, you can't look on the internet without seeing an article about it, and you know, now we've even had some children deaths attributed to the vaping, so we want to share some information of where we're at as a district, and then some things that we want to do to address that. And I want you to look at the next page. We're here because beginning of the year, principals brought concerns, either at principals' advisory council, principal meetings, and informal visits, what vaping was doing at their schools. So we put together a committee, and I wanted you to know who those folks were. And we put together a pretty good team, you see myself, Tommy Watson is the newest member of secondary education, if you've not met him, Salee Reynolds, Jean Heist, the Humanities Supervisor, Ramona Do, Coordinated School Health Specialist, and I'm telling you, I think Ramona's working about twenty-two hours a day on all kinds of things, so she's everywhere, and she's been very instrumental in this. Mr. Hartzell could not be here tonight, Chief Gus Pedus is the head of School Security Team, we've actually got Greg Pinkston here tonight, and Jeffrey Wright, but then we went outside the boundaries, and we've got the Knox County Health Department, Martha McCann is here tonight, the National Drug Enforcement Agency, the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, Tennessee Department of Health, and then Oxford DEA 360. So we've really tapped onto a lot of resources to give you some information here. So we want you to get an up-close and personal look, so what we're going to do right now, I'm going to have Mr. Pinkston and pass out some devices, so we want you to actually get to see them. If you've not seen him, I know you may have seen him at Kroger's or Walgreens or Pilot, but he's going to put some of these in your hands. Okay. So, these are very difficult for teachers to identify, a lot of them look like jump drives, I've got one here in my pocket, so yesterday I actually taped it to my glasses and did my best Mission Impossible, and when we were presenting to the executive team, I kind of put my, put it up to my mouth, so I could actually vape right in front of you if I was a vaper, and you may not know it. So you know, we've got kids in the bathrooms, we've got them doing it in classes, so it's, I won't say it's an epidemic, but it's a problem. So we want you to see those, and you see a variety of things, everything from very small to very big, water bottles, cell phones, all kinds of things. Then on this next slide, you'll see the girl where they're with the hoodie, you know, this time of year it's fall, and most of our kids are wearing hoodies, so they attach them to the rope. I could put one in my lapel, I could put one in my tie, you can put it in your belt buckle, they can put them anywhere, and they've gotten very creative of concealing these. Salee and Tommy are going to come up, and they're going to share some information with you as well.
One of the things, yesterday as we were presenting to the executive team, I was sitting with my clicker moving the slide the whole time, but the clicker that I was using is actually a vape, and the students will do the same thing in the classroom. But a lot of these vapes come with jewel pods, and that jewel pod, one jewel pod contains as much nicotine as a pack of twenty cigarettes, and they usually come four to a pack, and so you do the math, there's eighty cigarettes right there with those four jewel pods, and the kids are just taking them in all day long. They're doing it in the classroom as the teachers turn to do something else, and one of the reasons that they do that is because that vape disappears so quickly, and it's usually not seen, and, you know, we've heard about the vaping, and so often people think, well, that's just water vapor that they're taking in, and they're exhaling as well, but that is not water vapor, it's basically, it has, it's aerosol, and it has some very dangerous cancer-causing chemicals in that vape, it has heavy metals such as nickel and lead, and then as they're adding the flavoring to them, some of the, the chemicals that are in that, that flavoring are linked to very serious cancer-causing, are, lead to very serious lung disease.
Can I ask you a question, Salee?
Sure.
I'm just curious, where you were talking about the one jewel pod that's equal to about twenty cigarettes, and I don't know if y'all know this, but I mean, can you vape it all day long, I mean, like, how long does one last?
It just, it depends on how, how often they're using it and how quickly they're going through.
I just didn't have any sense of like, with one that's like equal to twenty cigarettes, if you would use it for a week, or if that's like a day, I mean...
The kids aren't, they're, they're not making them last a week.
Okay.
So they, they can go through one pod a day if they want to.
Okay, thank you.
So we looked at some, some of the data behind this. In middle schools, as of ten twenty-eight, we had forty-six incidents of tobacco and e-cigarettes, and our system, our Aspen system, right now it's hard to separate if it's tobacco or vape. The IT department is actually fixing that, I talked to them today, we'll have two codes from now on, one for tobacco and one for e-cigarettes and vape, so we'll be able to track it better at this point, when I was pulling this data, it was a little harder to do. At the high school level, you have a hundred and eighty-three incidents of tobacco and e-cigarette. Vaping incidents with THC, now, that's a variation of, you know, marijuana, so at the middle school level, we had three at this point, at the high school level, twenty-five, and of course, it ends up being today's out of school, of course, every incident of vaping THC is zero tolerance, so we're looking at a kid that's getting, you know, no less than a calendar, school calendar year suspension there. So...
A question real quick. Can you go back to that previous slide?
Yes.
Because the number of vaping incidents that resulted are always as high, where do those numbers come from?
Those come from the hundred and eighty-three. That, some of that data is pulled, and it's, and some schools, you, and we're going to talk about this later, but some schools are doing different things, and it's not consistent across the board, so it's looking a little different, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. Just so you can get a little comparison, and we want to compare the first quarter of 2018 to the first quarter of 2019, this was just the data before fall break, basically. In 2018, possession of tobacco, e-cigarettes, we had a total of one hundred and fifty-eight. This year, at the same point in time, had two hundred and two, so we had that increase. At the high school level, last year it was a hundred and ten, this year it's a hundred and sixty-seven. Middle school stayed pretty consistent, I guess, forty-eight and forty-five, but I think it's their, it's just now integrating middle school as, it's the more prevalent in high schools, we're finding out. Possession of drugs, at this point in the first quarter, possession of drugs here is anything coded seventeen, possession of drugs, so that includes marijuana, THC and everything. We had thirty-six total for the school here in 2018. At this point right now, fifty-four, that's a big increase in our zero, basically, drug incidents, and you look at the high school, that's twenty-four last year, nine in the middle school, and this year it's thirty-three at the high school and twenty-one in middle school. That's an increase there at the middle school level. With drugs with vape, now, I won't say drug with vape, that's the drug with the THC in the vape, okay? Last year, at the first quarter, there was only two incidents in the county school. This year, at this, at this point, there's twenty-six total, twenty-five in the high school, and it says one there, but when I updated the data earlier, later this week, it's actually three now, but I didn't update this slide.
I have one other question. How do y'all tell the difference between vaping of tobacco products versus vaping marijuana? I mean, is there a way at the school level to be able to know that? You might know that.
I can give you an answer, but...
Yeah, I'm just curious with like, when they're using the vaping, if they're using it for tobacco versus marijuana, how are, if they're getting caught, how are we knowing what they're using? Maybe that's a very obvious question that I don't know.
Unless it is tested, there's not a way, because they do not label if it has THC in here or not, and law enforcement right now is not testing these because it's so prevalent.
So the THC could be higher, we just don't necessarily know all the time. Okay.
A lot of them are going to be ninety-eight percent THC.
I need clarification on that real quick. So the law enforcement's not testing them, but we have pulled out in the data center that one is and one isn't, so I just maybe missed it.
So occasionally, and this was an example from last year when I was at Hardin Valley, we caught a student that had, that was vaping, but they had a pod that was unused, and on that pod, and they're, they're ordering them online, and they're getting them from other countries, this one particular pod that, that I found on the student said eighty-seven percent THC. That was the only marking on there, but, you know, there, sometimes you can get it that way, sometimes the kids, the kid will just confess and just say, yep, this is THC, but the smell is not the same as if you smell a joint.
On, on testing though, some of those numbers are going to get skewed a little bit because they did test them up until recently, and I think...
They're testing it, yeah.
And then it, then it dropped out, and then they, they can test them, but the drug lab for TBI doesn't like to test those because they get overwhelmed with that.
So that was a follow-up question to that, is that, once the student is caught with this, it becomes the school's possession, I mean, could we feasibly, if the money was available and there was a lab, test all of them to see, or is that, I mean, how, how does that work legally, or would that be against the student's rights or whatever to test what's found on them, or can we, do we have the right to do that?
Well, I think the, the issue would be, are we looking at discipline, are we looking for arrest, and if we're looking for arrest, it needs to be turned over to law enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
To address that question, there are strips out there, like test strips, that you can order online, they use them in Colorado, and you can just test the substance there as a quick sample, but we don't know if, you know, that would be something be admissible because it's such a quick sample.
Well, and it wouldn't be, I mean, I don't want kids arrested, I just want to deter them from doing it, and I would just think that would be a deterrent if they knew that it was going to be tested versus just handled as a discipline issue, so, thank you.
So Knox County Schools has already been trying to educate both the students and the parents about the problem that we have with vaping. Some of the students are already working on developing PSAs on vaping, they're, the students are very concerned. The high school wellness classes and the middle school health classes both have a part of that, of vaping in their curriculum. Health science classes, film studies classes, leadership classes, those are all other ways that, that Knox County is currently educating their students on the dangers of vaping. We're very excited that in January, and we'll talk about this a little bit more in a little bit in, in a few minutes, but the National DEA is coming in to do a vaping prevention presentation and training with our youth, and each school will be sending youth to this training, and then they'll take this back to their schools, they've set aside one day for middle school and one day for high school. Parents and teachers, and, and our parents and teachers both need a lot of education on this. They're receiving some, some education through the community and through media sources, there are pamphlets and flyers, and I believe you all have those in some of your packets. The DEA is willing to do some training, we have things on our website, Principal Outreach. Hall's Middle School just recently did a, a presentation at their, what was it, Open House, and it was very well-received, and then there are some presentations that are upcoming for the, for the parents and for the teachers and principals.
Who, who's putting on the Open House presentations? Is there somebody from like the central office, like if certain schools want it, or is it the schools developing, developing it themselves?
So the one at Hall's, the Sheriff's Department did it, it just, it, it's really up to the individual school and, and looking to resources, and I know Ramona Do has been given, has been giving a lot of the administrators different resources that they can use. And this is really, this is what the DEA is going to be doing, January ninth and January tenth, and they're coming in, they're, it's, all expenses are taken care of through the National DEA, just to provide a very interactive framework. care of through the National DEA, um, just to provide a very interactive framework for our students to take back to their schools and empowering our, our youth to, to step up.
So here's what we've got right now, and we're trying to present something that's going to be more consistent. So currently, if you get caught with a vape and it's got THC, it's, it's a pretty easy decision, it's zero tolerance. Then, the non-vaping has been, the non-THC has been very varied, it's not been consistent, I'll say that. We surveyed principals, we got everything from conferences to, uh, RLC, out-of-school suspensions, um, and currently, there's no intervention. So if you get caught, it's just a suspension. So when we got this committee together, we thought it was critical that we try to do some intervention and educate kids of what they're doing. Because, you know, the thing is, if they start with this, they're going to end up going to marijuana, opiates, alcohol, uh, you know, one addiction just leads to another, and so, you know, we really want to stop that. So here's our recommendations, and here's what we're going to try to do over the next several months. We'll keep with THC, zero tolerance, and that goes along with board policy J-194. Then, if we get the kids with the vape for the first time, the first offense will be, we're going to actually have, the law enforcement, Gus has been able to work with them, and we're going to write a citation, they'll go to court, and if you'll see, the courts are going to charge them a hundred and seventeen dollars. We'll do two days of out-of-school suspension followed by a day of RLC to complete the intervention, which consists of, the kids will come back and watch four fifty-minute videos. And then they will return to class the next day after they present to the parent and a principal or counselor or staff member to say, here's what we saw in this video, here's what we're learning, and this next slide will actually show you what the in-depth is, and I'll let you hit that.
In-depth is an acronym for Intervention for Nicotine Dependence Education Prevention Tobacco and Health. And it does, as, as Danny just said, it consists of four fifty-minute sessions, and this is something that's been recommended, recommended by the Tennessee Department of Health. The first session is basically just getting the facts. It breaks down the program for the participants. The second fifty-minute section deals with addiction, and it explains the harmful effects of nicotine and tobacco products to the student. The third session, um, deals with alternatives, and it will give, um, the students ways to, to deal with their urges and identify healthy alternatives to replace the tobacco use. And the fourth one deals just with next steps. Um, so as, as he said, the students will watch those four fifty-minute presentations, and then either that afternoon, at the end of the day of RLC, or the next morning, we'll work with the parents on when it's best for them to come in, then the student will give a presentation on what they've learned and what their next steps are moving in.
We had, uh, I want to tell you about a situation we had in middle school this week. A parent showed up and had the bag of the vape, didn't know what it was, so he asked the principal, tell me what I've got here. Found it in the kid's bookbag. Kid had paid a hundred dollars for it at a bus stop. Another, I'll say an older kid sold it to him. So, you know, one, you know, we've got kids that are selling them, and we got, you know, this was probably a seventeen-year-old sold it to a twelve-year-old. And to think, we've got twelve and thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids doing this is, there's something wrong with that. So, you know, we want to be aggressive, we want to get in front of this, and we feel like we need to, you know, do something, so we're trying to be very advantageous. So vaping with the, without THC, the second offense, would be the, another citation, so when you go back to court the second time on this, the cost goes up to one hundred and sixty-four dollars. You know, you want to spend twenty and then have to pay one sixty-four if you get caught. Uh, four days of out-of-school, we know that sounds severe, but we really want to send a message, because if they bring it back a second time after they've gone through the classes, they've gone before school administration and a parent, and they're still doing it, then that's a pretty serious indication there could be an addiction problem. Then the third offense, and, and we don't think we'll have to go there, another trip to court, a hundred and sixty-five, four-dollar fine, and then we would go back, uh, that's not, that's not right.
No, the four days of out-of-school.
It's, it's actually a disbarred hearing where they would come before the principal, and we would actually do anywhere between five and ten days. Now, we really think by putting these things in place, we'll, we'll cut it, I, I can't sit up here and tell you how much we'll cut it, but it slowed down a little bit because I think of all the national media attention it's getting, and I know the governor's come out and said something, the health department's been very instrumental, so, you know, there's something in the paper and the news every day. So, our next steps, uh, we have talked to some principals, we have not sent it out to all thirty-five secondary principals, uh, we plan to do that, you know, we're going to go back and we'll actually vet the policy, and not the policy, vet the process and make sure they're okay with what we've got. Uh, we kind of sent out some feelers, and we made a couple adjustments. Uh, you know, we're going to do mass information to parents through school messenger or school websites, uh, I'm sure Carly will help us in the communication of that. And then when we return, we want to do this in January, you know, if kids got caught with vape, they get a fresh start in January. And about most of, all of the middle schools doing assemblies start back, so, you know, we would cover this in assemblies, high schools would do it, and we'd do the open houses for report card nights, we'd be out there really letting people know what the plan is, you know, no surprises, be upfront with them. But we would start this in January. Ms. Baden?
Have we thought of, I mean, where I'm hearing this is all taking place is in the bathrooms. Um, and so, I mean, to me, putting posters like on the doors of the bathrooms and in the bathrooms, I mean, would be a very good reminder as you're going in, guess what, if you're caught, um, you know, but, because I mean, that, I mean, I, I think all of us that talk to people, this, we all know what's going on in the high schools, and we know that they're doing it, it's just how do we start getting them to stop?
One thing we're, the three of us are doing on our, our school visits is really encouraging principals to get people, uh, to get out into bathrooms, you know, I remember in Knox County, we had other kids who watched bathrooms, and we can't do that now, but several schools, we've got, uh, staff members who do periodic checks between class changes. You know, if a kid gets, gets out and goes to the restroom, a lot of times they're sneaking into vape, so, you know, we can access that and we can get, uh, staff to be a little bit more proactive. Any other questions?
Yes, um, so the first offense, the involving law enforcement at the first offense is, it, it's really heavy for me right now, um, especially since we're seeing a growing population with the middle school. I cannot support, um, a citation of law offense for a sixth, seventh grader, or whatever may be, um, in that, for the first offense. I do, so I do think that the classes and the in-depth and coming back and doing presentation, I think that is impactful, but for the first offense, uh, involving law enforcement, I think that's heavy. Um, second offense, third offense, absolutely, because you're, you're just not getting it, especially because it does feel very punitive, and we've said that the second and the third offense, there might be an addiction problem, but it feels like we're still, still treating it with the punitive force of what we do in society anyway, and so, I, first, yeah, the first offense feels, for law enforcement, feels real heavy for me.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that? Isn't it illegal, though, if you're under eighteen, to have them?
I'll refer to Mr. Dukler on that.
I would, I would have to research it, but I mean, that's, that is one thing I was, I was wondering, and, and perhaps, um, perhaps we can get clarification on that, I mean, but.
And we've been writing citations for cigarettes.
What would the charge be? I mean, I mean, well, yeah, for cigarettes, and, and, and I would think it would be similar, but like I say, I haven't, haven't done any specific research on e-cigarettes.
When we say we're writing citations, who is that?
It's law enforcement, that the sheriff's officer, the KPD officer would be writing the citation, um, and, um, who I just lost, I was going to say.
Whether it was illegal or not, did you have any comment on, on the, the age, the, if you're under eighteen, it's illegal, is it not?
All children under eighteen.
Yeah, so, so they're, I mean, you're, you know, you're breaking the law, and we're responsible to know the laws, you know, so.
Oh, well, the thing I like, on a positive note, is I really, and I know every child won't have that support, but I really like the fact that we're involving everybody and the staff and the parent, and there is some accountability on the student's part to report back what they've learned, and I know you can play games and all that, but I just think to involve the parent at that level is very important, so I don't know how, I mean, I don't have any problem with law enforcement, especially if we get the information out there and make kids aware that this is a serious thing, you know, it's not, it's not like back in the day when, in the fifties or the sixties, so, I don't know. But I do like the fact that you're involving the accountability of the parent and the student.
Hey, Danny, over here, could you show the slide again of the first offense?
Which one is it?
First offense.
Okay, yeah, let's go back to that.
There it is.
Right there.
Okay, and I, I love Evady, but, um, I'd have to disagree with her on this one. I think that absolute, I mean, we need to shake them up as much as we can the first time. Um, in all of my experience with, um, things that could lead to criminal behavior, um, an introduction to, um, a soft introduction, really, to law enforcement, which is what this would be, this gets people's attention. I totally agree with really being aggressive, and so I appreciate what you all do.
How would we deal with eighteen-year-olds who, it's legal for them to buy it, it, they're breaking a school rule, but it's not illegal for the eighteen-year-olds, I, maybe I'm wrong about this?
There's a citation.
So we go on campus, don't we?
Right, right, so that's why I'm just, I'm wondering about the court thing for an eighteen-year-old, because, I mean, it's a school rule they're breaking, but they're not breaking the law, so that's where I just am wondering if they're, if it, it carries over to school.
They would not receive the citation because it's not illegal for them to have it, but they can't have it at school, so they follow everything else.
Okay.
Except for the citation.
Okay, because I do realize, like, I think the majority of our, our prior seniors are eighteen at this point, aren't they?
And one of the things that I know in talking with Ramona, I think one of the strongest things is just that, um, peer intervention and presentation, and I know in so many of the school students have talked to Ramona about being the best advocate for their peers because they're very concerned that their friends are doing this, so if we could tap into that, and I'm sure you all have, but, and Ramona's working on that, but that's powerful. Is Ramona back there? Hey, I didn't see you back there, Ramona.
And, you know, I also think, Evady, to your point, that if, if the kids know between now and January, you're giving them, you're giving them full notice, like, it's not like they're not going to know, they'll, they will have been informed. So, um, you know, I spoke with, I have spoken with one of our middle school principals who two years ago had suspended, like, twenty-six kids, um, for two-day, for a two-day suspension when they had a vape, and then he increased it to four days. His suspensions went down to two. So, yes, they're probably still sneaking it, we know that, but they at least respect that there will be consequences. So I, I do hope that, that this is a hefty consequence, and there's a lot involved in this, um, so hopefully it will be a good deterrent, and it, you know, this is a serious health issue, so I feel like it needs to be addressed seriously.
Susan, um, if you don't mind, I'd like to hear from our, our student rep, I mean, to put you on the spot a little bit.
Great idea.
I mean, are, are we just blowing in the wind here? What, what do you think?
And something I was thinking when reading this and getting to work and already getting to discuss kind of the initial, and they talked about the PSA, um, competition that we're going to be working on, um, and the student advisory council's already been meeting, something that I kind of wanted to inquire about is, it seems like the only way that intervention and, like, prevention and, like, preventative methods are being taken for those are ones they've already gotten to a point where they've been caught or it's a disciplinary issue. So, to me, the students that are getting caught are the ones that are obliviously, um, engaging in this activity, and so my thought is that those are the kids that are already forming an addiction. We are, we're combating those who have already formed a connection, but we're doing nothing to stop it at the beginning, because it takes a little bit, it's not one-hit and you're already attached, we're doing nothing to kind of alleviate that beginning. We need to stop the introduction, we need to stop the spreading, because targeting the fire from its outskirts is only going to put out a little, so it kind of needs to be attacked from its root. Um, and, like I said, and I'm looking forward to the, some of this coming up in January on the tenth, and hopefully, like, um, Ms. Hill said, that peer-to-peer interaction will help to probably alleviate this problem more than any other route that we're taking.
So let's hear a little bit more about the, what you're doing in the curriculum and to affect the preventative.
When you're working on your PSA that you all, he's actually sitting on the board, he's actually sitting on and working on the guidelines for the PSA, so when you're working on that, be thinking about that that's the part of prevention that you all are working on. That group of students was adamant that they make sure that the people who are making the PSAs are not actually vaping while they're doing it, to show vaping, and I was very proud of them that they were going to try to actually provide, I think, five samples of vaping so that the students doing the vaping prevention PSA would not be actually vaping while they were doing the PSA. So I was very proud of them for that, and we are going, we are doing vaping prevention now. Um, Dr. Heiss is doing vaping prevention through her wellness classes and her health classes, her teachers are doing a lot. We did a lot last year in our Generation RX-type things, and, so there is a lot of things out there for the students, and we want to continue to do more. Um, we're going to be talking with the principals about doing posters, I have, I will be mentioning that to you guys when we meet in November, but trying to do posters on the backs of the doors in the bathrooms, uh, because when they close those bathroom doors, you know, those posters that are there to help you, that's an expense that, um, I don't have a budget, but, you know, I'm sure we could find money to put those sleeves up in the back of the bathrooms, and if students are the ones making the posters, how cool would that be to maybe have a, a neat slogan there and, and working through Dr. Heiss's groups and, and lots of other people? So, um, I totally agree with Noah, and it's students like Noah and other student voices in the school that we listen to because they're the ones who know what's going on, they're the ones who are coming to us and saying, this is happening to our friends.
Hi, I'm Jean Heiss, and, um, I supervise humanities, but part of that is being a specialist for all the PE, health and wellness teachers, and, uh, the upcoming district learning day, we're having a session for just our health teachers, I'm leading that, about, um, vaping and what can be done about, uh, this, you know, epidemic, when you stop and think about, uh, middle school kids now, and it's, it's creeping into elementary schools even, I'm, I'm sorry to say, it's even with our fifth graders. And so one of the things, uh, for prevention, I'm so glad you talked about the addiction because that's kind of been my big, big, big thing about this, is you've got a whole new, an entire generation of kids becoming addicted again to, to nicotine, so, um, I'm going to be working with counselors and the elementary counselors, and then I'm going to talk to Julie Thompson about this, to really make a push in fifth grade, especially that spring when they're getting ready to go up to the middle school for their, you know, orientation and all that, and, and making sure that they're aware that those temptations are out there and how to avoid them and what to do. And it just can't start, you know, soon enough, and, um, so anyway, I really work very closely with my health teachers, and I cannot say enough about what a great, great group of teachers they are, and, uh, to really hit this real hard in sixth grade, and talk about, you know, other alternatives to hanging out and being cool and trying to vape and really what, what that means. Uh, I want to point out something, that sixty-three percent of middle schoolers who start to vape do so because of the flavors. That's it. And they, many of them don't even know that there's even nicotine in it, they just think it's bubble gum or, you know, what, Twinkies or, I don't know, all of them, but all the different flavors, so, um, again, educating kids about, there's a lot more than just flavor that's in there. So, I'm, I'm looking, I'm glad to hear that, um, the whole issue about those flavored jewels is, you know, coming into the forefront of this and what to do about it.
Hi, Jean.
Hi, Terry.
Would you please send, uh, the board the, um, uh, schedule on the, um, the training you, you said some of the teachers were getting on Tuesday, where that's going to be?
Oh, I sure will.
And then also the, um, like, the training you said on the ninth and tenth, just whatever's being put out there.
Right.
Make sure that, um, we know when those are.
Okay, sure.
Kids would like to sit in.
The ones coming up, I mean, I'll send that out, but it's actually next, it's on the, uh, November fifth, it's going to be very first, uh, at eight-thirty. I think Jason, I think, is coming, I believe, someone's coming to, in the central office to come to it, but yeah, I'll make sure to send that out. And, uh, one of the other programs is called Catch My Breath, and that is a, is just a targeted program that's for middle and high school, uh, that many of our middle schools are doing. I want to encourage, again, more, it's a set curriculum on how to deter kids from starting to vape, but also a, a point of it is, if they are vaping, ways in which they can also, you know, they can quit. But I'll, I'll get those, make sure Ramona and I get those dates out to you. Any other questions?
Can I just ask a question about vaping? Is it, is it addictive like cigarettes are, like?
Yes.
It's very hard just to stop. It's very hard just to stop doing it the way cigarette smoking is?
It really is, it's more so. And when you, the question you asked earlier about, you know, how much do they, I mean, how many puffs or vapes do they get off that? It's really like a cigarette, if, you know, that, the old cowboy that takes that long drag on a cigarette. It's the same sort of thing. I do, I have looked at the research, and younger vapors take much, more shallow puffs than vapes than the more experienced vapors. And then also, the more addicted vapors are taking those longer puffs or drags or vapes, you know, to get that hit of nicotine. And we gotta look at, you know, the brain, the brain development in these young kids is just not, it's not complete until, you know, twenty, really, the age of twenty-five. So to add this level of addiction for them to deal with everything else they've gotta deal with, especially if they're middle schoolers, which is such a hard time, you know? And, and I, I want to hit head-on this, this prevention and also about addiction.
Could you, could you mention again, the elementary, the efforts in elementary? Where, when's it start? Like, like what you're doing?
Right. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't know that if anything has started specifically about e-cigarettes, but that's when I'm working with Heather Willis, and I'm gonna work with Julie Thompson to, and we may look at Catch My Breath and see if there's something goes down the elementary.
So, right now, Knox County Schools works very closely with the Health Department. Our Health Department is our very best partner. Carrie Thompson is the Tobacco Educator, the Health Educator from the Health Department. And we have a very good working relationship with Catch My Breath. They introduced us to Catch My Breath, and it's a free program. Anyone can go on. You can go on there and log on, and there are free resources. Any teacher in Knox County Schools could download that program and teach it to their students. And right now, they have a middle school program, so it could be done for all middle school. And they're working on a high school program. And so that could be taught to our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And there's a lot of programs out there for.
My, my point being, though, it seems like, when is it too early to talk about this? There would be third graders, second graders. I think those would certainly be a good time to talk about how harmful it is, et cetera.
Well, that, that's one reason I want to work through our counselors. I think that's a good avenue, but I agree with you, there's nev, I mean, kindergarten, there's never, it's never too early about taking care of their bodies and making good choices for their health and all that. And then, as they get older and they can start to understand what vaping is and process all of that. But I want to start with fifth grade and then work with those counselors. And if there's a need to keep going back, then of course we will. And I, you just can't start that early enough. I agree.
Jean, I heard what you said, and I, I mean, I agree, as far as having programs in the spring of fifth grade going into middle school. But I would also recommend the parents be involved in that. Because we heard where the parent brought the bag in or brought the device into the high school and didn't have a clue what they had found in their students' backpacks.
Right.
So, if, and that is such a crucial time when parents are so worried anyway about their kids going to middle school. So I feel like publicized, you would have a really high attendance if you could do that throughout the middle schools for parents and students alike. But I think it's key that we get those parents to be knowledgeable and know what to look for while they're still searching kids' backpacks for voters to sign for the night.
I, I could not agree more, and I'll work with Julie on that, how to ramp that up in, for parent programs as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for the work that you're doing with this. And I know you all are more than capable and smart to make this happen. But I just ask that we look at the DARE program, that we, that studies show that was highly ineffective, and we don't repeat what was done there because they're throwing resources out. So I just want to put that out there.
I, yes, I'm, yes.
I also wanted to ask about the addiction. The reason I wanted to ask about that is when we're looking at the offenses, it's very punitive. But if we're thinking a child is addictive, just suspending them for two days, are we doing anything to address of like, okay, these are ways to help your addiction? Or is it, you're watching, I mean, when I look at the topics of the video, they don't really deal with that, it doesn't look like. So I guess that's a little bit of my concern on that. Yeah, you're probably a good one to answer.
I'm Martha Buchanan with the Health Department. Nicotine's an addictive drug.
Right.
It's a legalized addictive drug. And so, you know, evidence would show that addressing addiction as part of whatever you create is important. And these guys, these guys know this very well, that, that you've gotta address that addiction. And so, that's, I think, part of the program was that the in-depth thing is about some of that as well. And then the, the Take Your Breath?
Catch Your Breath.
Catch Your Breath is also another really great program to help with that as well. So, it sounds like all the stuff we're doing is around addressing the addiction issue as, as well as addressing the discipline issue, so.
I have a question, and this is probably more policy-oriented, so Mr. Dubler, you might have to help me with this. But let's say that a student is facing an addiction. Is there any way that they can go to a counselor or administrator or some kind of school official to get the help to fight addiction without facing the disciplinary action? Since in essence, they're confessing to doing it, so what's stopping? I mean, I know that there are things in place like FERPA. But is, is there anything ensuring them that they have the safety to talk to an adult that they trust, which most of the time is at the school, without facing the, the legal and school and all the different disciplinary actions that come with that?
So there, I can't address the legal part of it. But if a student goes, we're gonna have the 1-800-QIT line and everything. We're gonna have the resources for our counselors. We're gonna have our resources. And come January the ninth and tenth, when, when you will be one of those people, go back to your schools, you all are gonna educate your counselors and your people how students can come and talk to. Because we do understand this is, when a student gets caught, there, the chances are, they probably are already addicted. They get caught that second time, they really need help. And that was one of the things that we tried to address that first time, is cessation. And I, I went yesterday, I've been on jury duty this week, so I spend a lot of time in this building. But I went to talk to, find out what judge we could talk to to find out how we could defer the court cost if they went to cessation classes, and how we could find out. So, you know, just to try to find out, just to ask those questions. But anyway, that is something that we are working on. But we want to find a safe haven for our students if they do go and try to seek help. Because they may not want mom and dad to know, but a student can't go to a counselor and tell us they don't want mom and dad to know, that would be something a counselor would have to tell mom and dad about because it's an illegal thing. But we could offer mom and dad help. Is that right?
Mr. Dubler, yeah?
Yeah, and it's a good question from Noah. I mean, the, I think the school counselors and the administrators are gonna have more discretion when it comes to tobacco or nicotine than they do when it comes to THC and marijuana. Because those are obviously much more regulated, much more stiffer penalties for that. I mean, you know, if a student, but, but with that said, I mean, even though you've got the zero tolerance, if a student's honest about it and says, you know, hey, I have this problem, I think those are gonna be mitigating circumstances on down the road that maybe that sentence, I say sentence, but it's more of a, it's, yeah, well, it is really for the, for the, for the, for the school. I mean, close to a sentence as you can get, you know, a hundred and eighty days. I mean, you know, maybe that could be reduced at some point if that student is truly willing to admit it and deal with it and move on. I'll go to an earlier question about the law, and I wanted to be, I wanted to make sure before I start opening my mouth on a, on a particular statute. But in eighteen, the legislature did amend the tobacco statute. So prior to that time, tobacco was unlawful for somebody under eighteen to possess. But in eighteen, Section thirty-nine dash seventeen dash fifteen oh five was amended to add vapor product. So, so all of the above is now unlawful for, for a person under eighteen to possess. And it goes on for some other details too, but I wanted to, because this is particularly relevant here, is that, you know, so a citation may be issued by a law enforcement officer for possession under eighteen. And this is not a criminal offense. This is interesting to me. I mean, you know, it's a civil offense. So at that point, what happens is, the person, the student would go to juvenile court and would be fined. And the fine would have to be against the parent or the guardian, not the student themselves, so.
So it's optional, the may?
It does say may.
Okay. So, I get, I just, I, bringing law enforcement in with, there's more than enough data. I'll make sure I bring it up next time when we vote on this. I bring my data that shows kids interacting with law enforcement is not a healthy route when it, when it's offset and done. So yes, I get to shake them up at the beginning, but it has not been effective. And so for the first offense, I think that we should look into the may being not as stringent. Because a student having to go to these classes, I mean, when you have a speeded ticket, you have to go to those classes so you won't get the points on your, on your, on your insurance. That's an all-day class. That does put you in a different mindset. And having to report back to their peers about what's going on, I think that can be very, a lot more effective. And then the second offense, then you start doing the, getting law enforcement involved. But I, I do not feel comfortable getting our kids involved with a law enforcement in the first option, especially if we have the option to not do it. If our hands were tied, I get it, it's what it is. But it, it just doesn't sit well with me, getting kids involved with law enforcement. Especially since our numbers are growing. That's gonna be a huge population of students that will have their first interaction with law enforcement in school because of decision that, that we know is because they like the flavor of bubble gum. I think that's just creating more, more, the pipeline to prison. And so I just, I, it just doesn't sit well with me.
And we'll go back and look at that, and we can make adjustments. But I will tell you, I have a daughter who works at the hospital. And she was at the hospital one night when a twelve-year-old came in with a collapsed lung. You know what that means for a twelve-year-old? Could be brain damage, could be a whole lot of things. So I guess is what I'm trying to prevent in the committee and the people working on it. I sure don't want us Knox County Schools being the first school district that loses a kid. Now, that's going out there pretty far, you know. We'll be glad to take it back, we'll take it back to principals and get input and be glad to share out at the next session, and we'll make whatever adjustments we need to. And I'll be honest, if I was one of the hardcore, I'm kind of old-fashioned with discipline. You know, first offense, I wanted to, I wanted, four days OSS and no other, nothing else, but these, they're working on me, I'm coming around. But you know, these ladies were adamant, and some of the committee members, about having the intervention piece and education piece with parents, community, kids. So I'm very grateful that they were on the committee and I wasn't so stubborn for once.
Well, you know, I want to commend you and for bringing this to the forefront and for the committee. Because I've, you know, this is a community, community issue. So I love seeing the partners that you've engaged, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. And, and I think that it does show that we care enough about our kids to put something in place to help them. So I commend all of you for your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thanks for going over. We didn't mean to go over so much. Brennae's been sitting here giving me the evil eye.
Okay, all right. I would like to call our Director of School Culture, Ms. Janice Cook.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. So why don't you take just a little moment of your time to review the cultural competency update and the future direction we're going. Some of this, we kind of started the conversation at the board retreat. I gave you an update at that point, but I wanted to just go over and bring you up to date to where we are now. So if you remember, in two thousand and eighteen, we went ahead and entered into a contract with the University of Tennessee. In that RFP, there was five training objectives. And for Phase One, we reviewed and provided training on three of those. So these are the three training objectives that we actually completed with the university. A summary of that is that we had direct instruction for diversity, culture and identity, implicit bias, and fostering healthy classroom environments. So by July thirtieth, we had completed all the trainings. So what that means is that the eighty-eight school sites and the other departments had the opportunity to participate in the training. We trained over, it says five thousand there, we trained over fifty-five hundred staff. That was administrators, teachers, school secretarial staff, support staff, central office staff, cafeteria workers, custodians, maintenance, finance, school security, the whole gamut. Every department was represented. We did not hire the, we did not train the nineteen-twenty new hires to the school district. That will be done within this year. So, the actual time, the actual Phase One took longer than the year it was planned because we had snow days and we had different things going on. So, that's why we did not complete that first phase until July the thirtieth. People were given the opportunity to provide an evaluation and feedback. So it was on a five-point score. And when we calculated the multiple thousand evaluations we got back, the university, the staff rated the university's training at a four, which was a great score, I think, for a group as large as that was and as diverse as that was. So the university did a great job in Phase One at helping us work out and set a foundation for our cultural competency. So I'm gonna let Tammy talk about the discussion that we had about Phase Two.
Okay. So as we moved into Phase Two, as we left last year and headed this year, and with the addition of Janice's position as School Culture Director, we really wanted our Phase Two to really focus on our last two objectives in the total of the five that were originally identified in the RFP. And that really wanted, we wanted a really customized focus and strategic focus to help schools specifically with third particular needs. And we needed to, and we continued as we had discussions with UT as we outlined the scope of work for this phase. They proposed to us that they would conduct an equity audit and a school profile for every school, that they would work to develop a cultural competency learning community, very similar to PLC structures in our schools that we have currently, but that would focus on the cultural competency component in each Knox County School, led by Knox County School staff and supported by UT, the team, the training team. They also proposed that they would have online professional development resources available for staff and would provide consultative support. But they did have some limited availability during school day, during the school day hours. And they would incorporate, as we had, as Janice noted earlier, that Phase One training would, for new employees and new staff makeups, would always be a part of the, the next phase for each new starting school year. And so as we continue to talk through and have multiple discussions, Janice and I and the team, really just trying to hone in, celebrating, of course, I felt like, we felt like our Phase One was successful and accomplished what we really needed it to do in terms of foundation and laying common language and understanding. But we really did feel like that we were able to look at some other options to really give our schools the customization of support. And the, and the support that really needed to be available and have the capacity to support schools during our school day and not let that be necessarily something that our staffs were, were sort of asked to facilitate. And that we needed to have more focused staff that could support schools versus asking them to sort of facilitate that work. So I'm gonna let Janice, as, as her department was defined and her roles defined, we felt like we had a new direction we may want to, to take.
So if we look at the Department of School Culture, there's a lot of things there you can see that we engage in lots of different focuses and different initiatives. Some of them pretty large, chronic absenteeism, disparities, restorative practices, the ACEs, the trauma-informed. We also have a lot of staff. So as we look at that and we looked at the process that we have, we were, we were building, the program that we were building, the realization is that cultural competency is not an add-on. Being culturally competent and being able to work with children in our building every day is really, should be a requirement for our staff. It should be something that's just the foundation of what we do. When a child comes into our Knox County Schools, that we will be able to take care of that child in a culturally competent way. So one of the things that we are going to put together is culture support teams, which are not just for cultural competency. Cultural competency or cultural responsiveness is part of that. But we need to look at... But we need to look at when students are struggling or they are requiring additional support, just the same as we have additional supports for students who struggle with academics. We need to have a process by which we can support students who have some specific needs. This is my little, another, I, I had the, the little jar with the Maslow's holes in it. Well, this is my little culture tree here. So, if you could look at that. So, when students come to us, basically, they come with their life experiences, they come with their culture and they come with their economic status. Those are things that, when they walk in the door, that's what they present, they present to us. There are departments that work with cognitive ability of students and their learning process for academics. So, as we look at this, we are not talking about that portion. We are, anything that we do, we will integrate with those departments, but right now, this focuses really just on the social emotional needs and the other needs of the students. So, if you look, we have to look at them through three different lenses. So, up in the tree there, we have the social emotional learning lens, we have the trauma-informed and the restorative practice lens, and then we have the school connectedness lens. The school connectedness lens, research tells us that one of the main catalysts for success for students who are, who are deficit and need additional supports in this area is that they have somebody that they can connect with or they have an environment that they can connect with. So, when we look at cultural competency, we're looking at when a person comes into our building, is there people in our building? Is there structures in place in our building that they can connect with? Is there somebody that they can connect with? Well, to do that, we need to make sure that we are culturally responsive. Social emotional learning, the social part of that is how you get along with other people. So, can you respect others and work with others in a socially appropriate way? As I said at the retreat, lots of people lose jobs that are really smart and can do the job. What they do is, what they can't do is they can't get along with other people. So, when we're looking at being culturally responsive, we're looking at, do we provide the skills for students so that they can function in a multicultural world after they leave Knox County schools? So, if you look at the trunk of this tree, we have the culture support teams. So, we are looking to provide teams that plan and intentionally support students who require additional supports. Now, some schools have PIT teams, which are professional intervention teams, which look at students, and some schools have really good PIT teams. Some schools have been running PIT teams since before I came to work for Knox County Schools because when I worked for Peninsula, I was part of the Knox County PIT team at Dogwood, and that was many years ago. So, we've had PIT teams around for a long time, but what, we looked at lots of different things, but academics were included. So, we're looking at developing culture support teams which can either stand alone or be integrated, depending on what the school needs and the principal wants. Really looking at what is the best way to support students in a systematic way within the school building, bringing together all the resources that we have. Now, if you look at the roots of the tree here, we have all these programs in place. We have lots of programs that we have that we can pull from to support students. So, this is our culture competency, or this is our school culture tree, rather. So, to do that, what we looked at was, could the University of Tennessee really support us in this? They did a great job with us in our first one, we were doing the direct instruction. But this requires boots on the ground in the schools. And that was the part that we, we could not reconcile at this point, that while we were looking to get the support that students needed in the schools, and the staff needed in the schools, was that we had to have something that was in the schools and readily available. So, what we're, what we have, we're not proposing, no, we've actually done it. So, the contract for UT has expired, and what we're looking to do is to hire two positions that are cultural coaches. So, these are two positions that they would provide that ongoing cultural responsiveness training for all new employees. So, this, that fundamental part that we did in Phase One, we're going to continue on because that is important work. And we have learned that, the feedback from staff was, this is important work and we need to, we need to know this. Sometimes it's a hard conversation, but a lot of staff said, thank you for this, this training. We're also going to look at providing that equity audit and developing plans for each individual school. Each school will look different. It's not a cookie cutter program. It's what does the school need? We also need to look at the equity of the Title I programs that we have and the students who receive, or the schools that receive Title I programming. We want to collaborate with community stakeholders and provide specific professional development as each school would need. So, this would be the role of these two people that we would employ to work with our schools. The implementation timeline, we're looking to hire two cultural coaches between now and the end of January, so over the next three months. And then, take time and develop that equity audit and school profile, develop and schedule Phase One, identify school-based PLC structures for student support. And that really is the, you know, looking at, we can't, we can't start off with every school, so we're going to look and prioritize the schools that are most in need to start off with, and then develop the cultural support team framework. And then, by next school year, we're going to, here is the, the things that we're going to do. I kind of read the last slide to you and I know that that's, you can read, you can read this slide, but basically, we're going to have that ongoing cultural responsiveness training. We're going to integrate it with all the different practices that we have, the trauma-informed, restorative practices. And we're going to make sure that our culture, our curriculum and classroom audit for cultural inclusiveness, we're going to get with Shannon Jackson and, and look at what we're, the actual curriculum that we use to make sure that if we need to include some more stuff or relook at some of our stuff. So, any questions?
Are these completely new positions or would they be repurposed positions?
These are new positions taken from the money that we had set, that has been set aside for the UT contract.
Okay. Can you tell me what the difference in cost is between if we had stayed with UT and the cost of hiring two people?
I think that it's, I think, what is it, 20, it's 20 additional thousand dollars, I think, really because we need supplies and materials, you know, for this first year.
I have, I have some few questions.
Yes.
First thing is, I'd like to, I guess, start out with our superintendent. I, I'm thinking, I'm not against any of this, let me just say that, but it's probably not going to come out that way. But all this is resulting from our Disparities in Education Task Force. Is that, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. It was part of the, in the final report, I think in March of 2016, ongoing training in cultural responsiveness was part of the, it was an action plan, a strategy within the action plan of that final report.
Okay. And so, what exactly did we agree to in that?
It was, and again, that disagreement was approved prior to me being in this position.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, I didn't bring, I don't have the, the exact agreement that was in front of the board, but the final recommendation states that require ongoing cultural competency training for all Knox County school staff certified and classified and, and provide cultural supports.
Okay.
So, can I ask, has, has the Disparities Task Force seen this proposal?
The, the Steering Committee, it's now, a part of the, the task force.
Maybe that would help answer that question.
Recommendation was the Steering Committee, so, yes, we, we have talked with the, that, what, a couple of weeks ago, I guess, maybe?
Yeah. Can you tell us just anything about that conversation?
Sure, Superintendent. Yes, we did talk to, and to the Disparities Steering Committee. Overwhelmingly, as they had questions, they definitely were more in support, understanding that because of the nature of this work, it is, it has to be ongoing. It's very difficult to do a one and done and really be able to see more results and more effectiveness across the district for the varying, varying needs. And so, and some key people that are still a part of that committee, Steering Committee, were some of the original task force members. So, for instance, Phyllis Nichols and Rosa Mar, Toma Battle, Andre Canty were there. I'm not sure, Board Member Evody Satterfield actually was at that meeting, but I think she was at that meeting as well, and our superintendent. But the, the work, and I think people do understand, you know, with our growing demographics at all of our schools, that our staff and our families and our students are definitely saying or giving us feedback that it's helpful to have better understanding of student. And it really just is another opportunity for us to strengthen relationships, understand each other better and continue to move forward. And I think they're open to, and it would probably be more effective and helpful for our schools if there was someone totally dedicated to that. And sort of the disadvantage with a outside vendor is that we don't get to control their time in terms of our daily work. And they're, the current, at least the current vendor was, you know, they were full-time professors themselves. So, that was sort of not, they weren't able to do that.
And I, I understand all that. I, I get all that. And I do get it can't be a one and done, that it's always a, an ongoing process. I'm just, I'm just looking at some of the responsibilities for these two positions and like conducting, conducting equity audit. What is an equity audit?
Well, primarily, it's to just identify sort of what the needs are in your building. It identifies what your demographics might be, what some of the, have schools identify, what are some of those problem areas that your staff may need help in. Maybe when you have EL students or when you have students with disabilities or students of poverty or just students of difference. And, and just in populations, not where there's always a, I guess, visible difference, but just understanding culture, understanding what are those places that would be helpful in terms of making sure that students, not only just from a social standpoint, but also from an academic standpoint, and how they, how we provide them better supports to get, to make sure that everybody has sort of equal opportunity to be able to access curriculum, whether that's, and also see visual reflections, maybe even in their classrooms, that reflect the population that sits in those classrooms.
So, so we're, we're going to ask someone to go into a school and do this equity audit and they don't even, and they don't know the school? They don't know the personality of the school? They don't know, you know, the kids in the school?
So, what, they would develop the equity audit? That would be one of the things. There's a number of equity audits out there. So, I think that they would look to see which, which ones do we sit as a team and look and see, which one do we feel like is most appropriate for Knox County schools? And then, they would work with administration to do it. I think that that's part of the issue is that it was, when we were looking at the UT contract, they were wanting teachers to do that and that's, we were taking that off the table because we weren't putting additional things on to teachers to do. So, I think that they would go in and with the, the administration, they would look, it would be, I mean, it would be a short survey. It's not, you know, it's, it's a survey that you would do to help direct the planning that you need for your school because each school is going to be different as to how, what kind of supports they may need, you know, what kind of trainings that they may want to have.
Can I?
I'm just really, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I stick something in? First of all, thank you for your work, Janice, Tammy, appreciate it. I think philosophically, I certainly agree with most of what is you presented. I think you probably also realize that there's some controversial aspects to this. This is not the setting to debate those, and I'm not going to try to do that. But, but I think that we do have, we, we need to have time to talk about some of these things. There's definitely some flashpoint types of phrasing and, and so, I hope that's, you know, we have that time. I think that also, we've got to realize that one of the, one of the basic criticism of government is bureaucratic growth, bloat, et cetera. Certainly, here we go, we've got another department, we've got more people. Simultaneously, I, I wonder about the effect of this on the classroom teacher, okay? I'm about making fewer things on the plate, not more things on the plate. And so, that's another aspect of this that we need to discuss, talk about it, et cetera. But I appreciate, do appreciate your work.
And to continue on with Mr. Norman's line of questioning, I agree exactly with what you were saying. And, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, we've, we've got our PBIS going, we've got our restorative interventions going. I would be surprised if we have got a school in this district that doesn't have, whether they call them PIT meetings or whatever they call them, that don't come together and talk about our kids and specific needs. And I'm, I'm just, I'm really struggling with what, other than, I understand we need somebody to train teachers coming in, especially our new teachers, what two positions spread over 90 schools are going to be able to come in and really bring to the table that, that, that these schools aren't already doing? That's just kind of my, my struggle at the moment. And, and not put something else on our teachers, as Mr. Norman had just said, you know, we tell them there's going to be another committee or another meeting or, it's just when they're already, in my view, 99% of them are very tuned into their schools, they know what the problems are. I mean, need to connect with someone, that, that's, that's age-old. That's age-old. And that's something that, that, that our schools, I think, have been very proactive with trying to identify these students of need and make sure that they've got a trusted person in the schools. I'm, I'm just, I guess I just feel like I'm kind of hearing the same thing over and over again.
So, I think that part of the issue is when you look at the bottom of that slide and there's all these, there's all these programs. That's exactly right. They have all these programs. I think that part of this committee would be doing is looking at what specifically do we need for this student? Like, if we have a list of students, if we're working on our PIT team, do we have the right people at the table who can help us identify what specifically out? Because it is, we have a lot of programs that we layer on top of each other. I mean, that's, that's what you could do. You could just layer another program, another program, another program.
And I dare say, when you were at Dogwood, that's exactly what you did in your, in the PIT meetings. That's exactly what you did. You took the kids and you saw what was out there and you identified, and then you got it going. And I, I just, I guess I feel like the majority of our schools are already doing that. That is in place.
I think that some are more successful than others, and I think that's what I'm saying. Some people may need it and some people will not need as much support as others do at this point.
Thank you.
Referring to the slide, intensifying school support. So, if I heard you correctly, because I have the concerns that Tony and Terry do, and we don't want to add more retired teachers, but we also have to be respectful of our administrators. And this team would include a social worker, school counselor, an administrator, the culture coach, and then others as needed. So, I think it's a couple back. So, that doesn't mention anything about our So that doesn't mention anything about our classroom educators. But it could include them as, under the others as needed. But I would hope that would not, because I know, I still hear from teachers in the district that are just overwhelmed at having to do, whether it's needed or not, a PLC meeting every week. And so, just so this doesn't morph into another weekly meeting or whatever, you know, where those teachers are, again, giving up their, whatever it be, their planning time or whatever, so.
So that's why specifically those, those are identified, those ones are identified, because those are the support people.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
And I think it needs to be, it needs to be, we need to look at coordinating to make sure that we have a time when we have those people together so that collectively, you know, they have a lot of knowledge and a lot of expertise together. They're not always in the same building at the same time, you know? So it's, logistically, it's a nightmare. But can we make sure that we are maximizing all the efforts, not duplicating, you know, of all the support people that we have?
And I thought I heard you say that you were trying to move away from teachers and, to this. And, and just to give those, that team the flexibility to meet as needed and not necessarily on a regimented timeframe. Does that make sense? So that they can meet as that school feels they need to meet, so.
Okay. Thank you all very much for presenting to us. We appreciate your work and your time, thank you so much. Board members, that concludes our, our agenda. If you would, if I could just say before we move to public forum, if you would just give Ms. Cotten your feedback, if you liked this format or not. We know it's cold, so you don't have to tell us that because we are little popsicles up here. But otherwise, if you could give us your feedback, that would be helpful. And it would just be to consider doing this for our next quarterly workshop. So I would appreciate that. Do we have public forum?
There's no one signed up for public forum tonight.
Okay, thank you. And now we have board forum.
I did like this setup, it felt very, a lot more relaxed than in there.
Excellent. Ms. Owen?
We had a great trunk-or-treat at Inskip this week, it was lots of fun. One of the children asked if I was the queen of candy. I told her, yes, I am.
That's wonderful.
The queen.
Yeah, I like this room too.
Okay.
And I think this is, I think Mike will be okay with me saying this. There's a, an outdoor classroom workday, community workday at East Knox Elementary. My department in engineering is helping develop the classroom and all that stuff. Just wanted to make that in there.
Great. Ms. Bab?
I just want to say there's just so much exciting stuff going on in our schools. I mean, this last week, I couldn't even go to all the stuff at my elementary schools because they were competing science nights at different schools, there was trunk-or-treating. I just think it's really exciting. And then also, I want to congratulate, the Knox New Sentinel did twenty-under-twenty that they named, and we had two current students at West High School, Luke Lamplie and Tyler Larabee, and then we had two alums. So it was very exciting to have four West grads nominated for their accomplishments.
Very nice. Ms. Hill? Ms. Bounds?
Okay, speaking of this room, I just wanted to publicly thank Mayor O'Hara and Jane Barrett and Terry Cotten, who made this possible. And an added bonus to this, because I've been out in the rain all day today, is that we have covered parking. But this wasn't always an option, and so I really appreciate Mayor O'Hara making this a possibility for the Knox County School Board.
Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie? Okay. And I'll just echo what Ms. Bab said. I appreciate so much all the time and effort that our staff puts in. That's, since being on the board now for a few years, it just, it strikes me as, I think the public has no idea how much time and effort our staff put into our schools. Both our, you guys seated around this table and sitting here, and also our administrative teams in the schools and our teachers. So, so thank you, I appreciate everything that you do, and I think that you don't hear that enough. So thank you so much, and we are adjourned.